Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 12th City Council meeting for the City of Federway. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
All right, welcome, everybody. It's great to see everybody here. It's a beautiful day. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. Oh, we do have two council members that are out. Councilmember Dovi is on vacation out of the country, and his absence is excused. Councilmember Tran is feeling ill today. His council member, excuse me, his absence is excused as well. All right, now we've got proclamations. We've got Disability Pride Month proclamation. Councilmember Assefa Dawson.
Yes. One second.
And actually, before we go any further, I do want to say, we had a really tragic loss of one of the, really one of the special members of our Federway team in IT, Jerry Haynes, with our IT services, passed away unexpectedly about two weeks ago. And I could tell you that was a big hit to many here in the City of Federway. Jerry was somebody that just always had a smile and a great word. He worked so hard for everyone, and he was just a really special person. And he passed away, as I said, and I think it'd be altogether appropriate to have a moment of silence for Jerry Haynes. Thank you. It is, when you lose someone you work with, it is difficult. And I want to thank our IT team and especially our HR team who responded, you know, so helpfully to, you know, address concerns with other employees. Okay, proclamations and presentations. We have Disability Pride Month presentations. Councilmember Assefa Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. And the proclamation recipient is Jennifer Ramirez-Robson from the, she's the Chief Program Officer for Northwest Center. And so you could step up to the podium whenever you're ready, and I'll read the proclamation. Disability Pride Month. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, was passed by the United States Congress on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities, and whereas the ADA prevents discrimination based on disability, requires that employers provide reasonable accommodations, ensures that public accommodations meet accessibility requirements, and is recognized as one of the most important civil rights laws in history. And whereas disability serves as a tool to tackle ableism, bias, and discrimination, and reshapes false, negative perceptions of individuals with disabilities as people with value, talents, and significance, and whereas Disability Pride Month includes physical disabilities, cognitive, intellectual disabilities, psychiatric disabilities, sensory disabilities, and honor for those who have died due to negligence, suicide, rebellion, illness, and eugenics. And whereas the 2025 theme for Disability Pride Month is "We Belong Here and We're Here to Stay," delivering the powerful message that people with disabilities are a vital part of every community, and that they will not be erased, ignored, or pushed aside. Now therefore, we, the understand Mayor and City Council Members of the City of Federway, do hereby proclaim that July 2025 has been Disability Pride Month in Federway, and encourage all residents to share in the responsibility of creating a community that is safe and welcoming for all people, regardless of their ability. And I also want to acknowledge Jennifer, who used to be my Director at King County Housing Authority, and also she's a proud U.S. Air Force veteran, so I wanted to also acknowledge that. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Assefa Dawson. Mayor, council members, it's a pleasure and an honor to be here today and tell you just a little bit about Northwest Center and our journey. Northwest Center, this 2025 marks our 60th anniversary. Northwest Center was founded in 1965 by parents who refused to institutionalize their children with developmental disabilities. Our founding mothers authored and won approval for the Education for All Act in Washington State, which served as the blueprint for modern-day Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. So, most people don't know this, but special education in our country started right here in Washington State. And that advocacy and that voice is really grounded in what we do at Northwest Center. We now support annually over 1,500 people with disabilities, birth through career and retirement, and that is across the spectrum of disabilities that were mentioned. We offer programs and services for infants and toddlers. We have an inclusive early learning center in downtown Seattle. We serve adult clients in five counties in Washington State, as well as serving clients in the UK, Australia, and India. We also provide inclusion training and consulting for early learning schools and providers, as well as employers. We also have several businesses that help fund some of our services, including Big Blue Truck, which some of you may be familiar with. They used to come around in communities and take gently-used household goods, and they divert about 17 million pounds of goods from the landfill annually. So that's pretty impressive. We have a partnership with Amazon. We provide all of their corporate reception services. We have a call center here in Washington, in the greater Prejean Sound region, as well as in HQ2 in Arlington. We have a commercial printing company in Bellingham. We have a commercial laundry, facility services division, and what that means is that we employ over 1,000 employees, with over 30% of them with a self-declared disability. Now, in Federway, we are currently serving 14 clients in supported employment in seeking, obtaining, and maintaining employment. We also work with five employers in Federway to include people with disabilities in the workplace. Through our early learning, training, and consulting program, we have worked with 28 individuals in 12 early learning schools or programs here in Federway. Why Disability Pride? For us, for me, I also identify as a person with disabilities. Disability Pride counteracts stigma and fear around disability. Living with a disability doesn't mean that you're always sad or pathetic. People with disabilities experience joy and accomplishment. They experience life milestones and abundance, and yes, pride! I am proud of how my own disabilities fill me with more empathy for others. I am proud of my problem-solving skills, and I am proud of the work that I see my team members, clients, families, and community members accomplishing every day to rid the world of ableism. And I'll leave you with this quote from Mohamed Gemni. "The disability is not the problem; the accessibility is the problem." And I encourage everyone to think about barriers to including people with disabilities in your community and beyond. Thank you.
Ms. Robson?
Yes.
Can you tell us who the five employers are in Federway so that we can...
I don't have them, and we actually, because they're connected with clients, we have some confidentiality. But I can say, because I saw them on the agenda, we do do work with the library system in a couple of different ways, where people can volunteer, or they can try out their skills. But that is certainly one partner that we have that we enjoy working with. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you so much. They're going to take a picture. What's that? Oh, yes. Of course.
All right, and now we're on to Item B, Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report. All right, Ben Miller will help with the slideshow. There's the Council President I at the Salmon Bake. So, we had a busy week, busy several weeks. We had the, what I believe is nearly 30 years of National Night Out being celebrated at multiple dozens of locations in Federway on Tuesday, August 5. This event is so important to our community that we have, that the council has literally changed the date of our first meeting in August to this second week of the month, so that council members and staff members and law enforcement and firefighters can attend the National Night Out in dozens of neighborhoods in our community. You can see the firefighter there. That's myself with, in a particular neighborhood, and we went to multiple council members and police officers and firefighters and, you know, members of our city government went out to dozens of locations to meet with folks and talk about how we can come together as a community. It was a great event. The whole, the trick is to get to as many places as possible and to make sure you don't eat too much at any particular location. You've got to plan it out. All right, mission accomplished. All right, next, we had the King County Fair opening ceremonies on July 17. There, I was there with regional leaders, all the mayors for South King County, and our, the King County Councilmember for that area, Reagan Dunn, as well as the new King County Executive, Shannon. And it was a great event. It's always great to be there. Our King County Councilman, Pete Von Reichbauer, was there as well. This is the oldest fair west of the Mississippi. The first time they had the King County Fair in Washington was in 1863, when Abraham Lincoln was President. That's one of the oldest county fairs in the entire nation. So, it was great, and so it was a nice event. Okay, it's always a beautiful view out there as well. We had the Good Eggs Breakfast. That's put on by our King County Councilman, Pete Von Reichbauer, who is in the picture. And we had our State Treasurer, our Federway's own, Mike Policiari. And Mike, the Treasurer, was telling us about his duties as a state-elected official and what the investment, you know, essentially what factors he considers and his team considers in investments and that portfolio. And we also have Jeff Stock pictured there, owner of Cafe Dante and Omni Properties, and he was there as well to support Pete and our State Treasurer. So that was a nice event. And those usually happen over in Auburn at the racetrack and that beautiful facility. Okay, next, now that we, as I mentioned, we had the Kiwanis Salmon Bake. This has been going on for, you know, dozens of years.
69.
69 years. And several council members were, many of the council members were there, hundreds of community members were there. Just a really great opportunity, just a beautiful day at Steel Lake Park. Great musical presentations, and the food was absolutely amazing, so it was a really great, great time for the community. Next, we had the State of the Chamber Luncheon. That's myself and Councilmember Walsh and Becca Martin was able to give a great presentation on what's going on at the chamber, and I believe there's an article in the Federway Mirror right now about that very issue. Okay, same day, we were actually over at Kids' Day at Steel Lake Park, really one of the great events. Rain was, they powered through the rain and got it done, and the clouds parted for the kids to have a good time. And big thanks to Parks, you know, Parks made that very special, very good event, and again, at Steel Lake Park. Steel Lake Park is probably one of the most heavily-used locations and amenities in our community, and it was absolutely fantastic. Okay, and most importantly, we got a corn dog out of it, so thank you for those folks. Next, we had the U.S. Swimming Masters Summer Nationals at the King County Aquatic Center. And, you know, Steve Freiborn, he is one of the critical individuals that made this happen. He's a real, really one of the key factors that brought this event here and that made it such a success. He brought forward some awards for myself and King County Member Pete Von Reichbauer, but if anybody deserves an award, it's Stephen Freiborn. And he really did a great job bringing all that together. And there were teams there from, not only all over the country, but around the world, from Mexico and, I think, Spain and Panama and all over to compete. And myself and Ben and Bill and several others, and then Pete, Pete Von Reichbauer ended up there as well. It was great to see all the competitors, and it was just a great day. Then we had the Community Festival at Town Square Park on August 9, just this past Saturday. I was not able to attend. I was dropping our one and only son off to college on Saturday, but I got reports and there were the pictures there. It was an absolute great event from everything I've heard, and once again, that was at Town Square Park. Thank you, John, to you and your team, and all the volunteers that made that happen. Upcoming community events. We've got free back-to-school haircuts at Town Square Park. I believe this is the third year they're doing this, on August 22. You know, big thanks to Kristin and her team and all of the folks. So that's going to be occurring at ages 5 to 18, and that, again, is on August 22 and starts at, can't read the fine print. What time?
I believe it noon, but I could be wrong.
Yeah.
You didn't advise it to hear.
Can you see it?
Yeah, I think it's noon.
Okay, for those watching at home, we believe it's noon. John, does that sound right?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, noon, Town Square Park, ages 5 to 18, come one, come all, for free haircuts. Very, one of the really nice things in our community. We also had the Lions Club Car Show at the Commons on August 23. And again, that's Saturday, August 23, the Lions Car Show. Always really fun to see all the different kinds of cars and talk to folks, and probably one of the hardest things I have to do that day is make the mayor's choice in regard to, it's always a tough decision, but really a lot of fun cars. In fact, actually, when I'm, when I see cars around town between, you know, as, in between these events, I always say, hey, do you come down to the Lions Car Show? Because we'd love to see your car. We've got the Repair Cafe at South King Tool Library on the same day, and so that's going to be going over there at the King County Tool Library. Okay, then upcoming community events. We've got back-to-school youth clothing swap at South King Tool Library on August 30, and then we've got Rain Fest at Steel Lake Park on September 14. So, EJ, I take it that would be probably your crew. Tell us what Rain Fest is.
Sure. So it's a community education around stormwater and environmental education that's targeted for children.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, all right, that should conclude my report. Okay, now we are on to Council Committee and Regional Committees' Report. We've got Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety. Councilmember Walsh.
All right. This month, we have not had a committee meeting, and our next committee meeting, I have it right here. Hold on. Let me look another way. John, do you want to help me out here? Oh, John disappeared. Is September...
9.
9. September 9, 5 o'clock, right here. And, but anyway, I want to commend the Parks Department on the, this time of year, there is tremendous use of the parks, of all the parks. This is when they get used a lot. And the Parks Department does a tremendous job of keeping it in shape. And also commend the Police Department also. I think that this is a busier time of year for them. Am I correct on that?
We can be pretty busy this time of year. Yep.
Yep, so, and thank you to all of the officers and the team there, so no more report.
Great, thank you very much. All right, Land Use and Transportation, and also Finance, Council President.
Thank you. The next land use meeting will be September the 8, 5 o'clock, here in Chambers. Finance will be September 23, also 5 o'clock in Chambers.
All right, great, thank you. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Assefa Dawson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Our next scheduled meeting is September 9. And tonight, you see on our agenda, item number D is on the council business, is the public market DEG grant application, so can have that discussion also. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Regional Committees' Report, Councilmember Rhonda.
Thank you. This morning, we had our monthly service club meeting, and one of the things we talked about was the Federway community caregivers hold a super supper. It is going to be on October 10, which is a Friday, at Christian Faith Center. They can have 176 people there. In the last several years, they haven't had very few, very many people. This is an organization that helps people with rent, with gas, with food, with utilities. They are an amazing organization, and they need the community support. Tickets are $40 apiece. Cafe Pacific provides the soup. Key clevers from Kiwanis Clubs come and help and volunteer. Please attend. It's really worth your time. You will hear all that they do and why they're so important in our community. $40 a ticket isn't very much for those who would like to donate to this organization. And if you'd like to come in, you can't come, please let me know, and I'll make sure that you can get there. But once again, that is October 10. On National League of Cities for the council, applications are now open for leadership on advocacy committees, the Board of Directors, member councils, and constituency groups. And the applications are open from August 11 to September 29. If you are, if you apply for a leadership position and you are not picked, you are automatically put on that committee, and you can apply for up to three. So I would encourage you to apply. Association of Washington Cities has applications open for state boards right now. And on August 18, they are having a 2026 Legislative Priorities meeting from 11:30 to 12:30 online. And September 10, they're having an online discussion on Understanding Washington Ethics Laws. So I would encourage you to sign up for those. And the Senior Advisory Commission is meeting tomorrow here at City Hall from 2 to 4, and we invite anyone who's interested in learning what we're doing to please come in and attend. 2 to 4, and we have public comment at the very beginning at 2 o'clock. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Council President report.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We haven't mentioned the fact that Fusion had their event on Saturday night. It was very, very well-attended. Thank you, Mayor. And just to let you know that they're doing wonderful work in our community, but if you have clothing that's really nice, that you think would be something where people could use to, especially for men, could use for job interviews, you can drop it off at the Pete Anderson Center, which is right across from Poverty Bay Coffee Shop. That's where they have some of our folks living there, some of our homeless folks. And so they do take clothing in at the main door, so although you can take your back-to-school clothes back to the school, to the Repair Cafe, you can take your job interview clothes to the Pete Anderson Center for the Fusion folks. Then, in conjunction with the Disability Month, I did happen to see a man or met a man at the community center swimming pool, and my granddaughter, who is wearing a cast, who has no fear of falling out of trees, eight years old, was running from the shallow end of the pool over to the diving board and diving off. I'm having heart failure. She's got a cast on her hand, and then after it's all over, she tells me she's not supposed to get wet. Well, there we go. So I introduced myself to a man who was there with his adult daughter, who I recognize as having disabilities, because I have a disabled granddaughter. And so I talked with him a little bit, and you know, their child, their adult child needed 24/7 care, which is very difficult for folks. And so I just want to let you know that at the community center, we do have a community group, maybe John Hutton can talk about that, that is for adult folks who have disabilities. And it's a good peer contact group for them to do things with, go on events and go on. Is that correct, John?
Absolutely, Council President. We have a, actually, a very robust and acclaimed inclusion program for adults with disabilities, and it is a tremendous program. We offer all kinds of opportunities and help for that population. We have two people that help run that, Sabrina Bates and Kevin Hutchinson. They do a magic job, and we would always love to have more people. We have a very large group, and we're always looking for more.
Thank you very much. So pass that on to people you may know in the community. It's very difficult when you have a disabled adult, child, adult, well, my 50-year-old, they're still my children, so it's very difficult to find things for them to do. And so thank you very much for doing that, John.
All right, Councilmember Daniel, did you have a report with regard to Federway?
Yeah, Federway. We met on July 22. Tonight, we have four items on the consent agenda, one on the council business to attend to. Our next meeting will be September 23, 5:00 p.m. in Chambers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's see here. We've got public comment right now. You've got three minutes, and we have three pink sheets. Abu Dolakya. Oh, and Abu, before we get started, I did want to recognize, we have a school board member here, Joan Murphy. Thank you very much, School Board Director Murphy, for being here and for your service to our community. Let's give her a big round of applause. All right, Abu, the floor is yours, sir.
Hi, sorry, it's Adiv, Adiv Dolakya.
Oh, you know, I'm sorry, I tried to do this without my glasses.
No, you're okay. It's totally okay. So I live in Federway, and I'm here to talk about adding more sidewalks to the City of Federway. So I've lived in the Federway community for nearly 10 years. In that time, I found that it is an unwalkable city. I'm here to urge the City of Federway to build more sidewalks and walking paths throughout the city. The problem with the sidewalks we have now is that they are so inconsistent and don't serve a practical purpose. Sidewalks end and start randomly, and individual neighborhoods and communities have sidewalks only to the end of their properties. That often means that people can only go to the end of their neighborhood safely before the sidewalks disappear again. Shoulders are hardly walkable paths and aren't very safe. Drivers often go over them when turning or following curves of the roads. Some roads don't even have shoulders to walk on. Bicycles can often share the roads with cars, but pedestrians don't have that same privilege. Implementing more sidewalks where they are lacking provides extra protection to pedestrians. And while on the topic of cars, The Climate Reality Project states that 58% of carbon emissions in the United States comes from cars. Encouraging people to walk discourages the overuse of cars, which can reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Walkable cities are important for thriving communities. Having more accessible sidewalks and walking paths is important for improving community health. For example, since 2022, obesity rates in King County have stayed static, sitting at 22.8%. The goal should be to bring that number down. Boston University School of Public Health released an article in February of 2023, which described the impacts of walkable cities on community health. It explained that residents in walkable communities were nearly twice as likely to engage in adequate amounts of physical activity. Walkable communities also resulted in lower BMIs in their population, which is a common factor in obesity statistics. Walkable communities can also promote healthy social interaction, which can help build strong community ties and improve mental health. Walkable cities are important for improving our community physical and mental health. It promotes greener activities, and hundreds of thousands of residents deserve access to walkable cities. I implore this city to make changes now. Make Federway more walkable and help this community thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Adiv. Great comments. I'll ask our Public Works Director to get your information, and what I'd ask, kind of my interest is, which particular areas of our community that you're focused in on or that you've noticed? And then perhaps, EJ Walsh, our Public Works Director, can give you a little bit of her history about why some neighborhoods have them, some don't, and about, you know, sort of the history of the city a bit, and then, but your points are all well-taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, EJ. Okay, Cindy Laws? And then Vicki Chenoweth.
Good evening, council members. It is good to see you again today. I am Cindy Laws. I am the lobbyist and public affairs consultant for the Federway Public Market. And you have on your DS tables the completed copy of our feasibility study. This has outstanding conclusions to it. As we've mentioned throughout the, throughout... As we've mentioned throughout the last couple of years, we've always believed that Federal Way near the new light rail station would be an ideal site for this. To reiterate the success that we believe it's going to be in looking at the success of the Pibus public market in Wenatchee, is a market that's about, right around 25,000 square feet, brings in annually more than $20 million in sales. There are 120 full-time employees in that market and it serves 16 full-time, full-service businesses and scores more smaller, whether it's table, day tables, seasonal tables, and so on. We firmly believe that since our public market, we're planning on having 50,000 to 60,000 square feet spread over two floors of a six-story building. That's the maximum height on your building code that could be built in that area. That we can provide tremendous value, enormous sales, and enormous opportunity for new businesses, emerging businesses, people thinking about starting a business, and very importantly, the youth that want to think about going into business, whether it's a DUCO Club or high school kids wanting to try something out. We can be the place that they can do that. The feasibility study before you is volumetric. It's 122 pages and we had it printed. We ascribe to our values when we do our product printing. We also have produced now a window sign for businesses that are supporting us. And we have those in two sizes. You've probably seen our smaller cards that we've been handing out at the farmer's market that we are at every other week or so. And we're getting tremendous feedback and positive support from that. Mentioning walkability, the Federal Way Public Market being right next to the Link Light Rail Station will create another jewel as the people walk between there and the pack. So it's really making this great jewel of the downtown that you are all making your own legacy. I thank you again for all of your help, your advice, the questions, good questions that you provided us, the opportunity for us to dig into more information. I urge you to continue to support us as you move forward today with the agenda item and we look forward to building this great project in your community. We continue to work with other groups around the community and we're in the process now of adopting more board members. So we look forward to introducing those to you later on. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. And thanks for the work you do.
Thank you.
All right. And all of your volunteers and board members, who are, many of whom are present today. Thank you. Vicki Chenoweth.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So I am here today to talk about the senior voucher program, which is going to be on the agenda later this evening. And I know that sometimes people look at $6 and they don't think much about it. But we, at the Federal Way Farmers Market, we have $6 vouchers that we have a grant for from Virginia Mason St. Francis. And then we have 20 vouchers that we give away each week from Still Lake Presbyterian Church. They started out, Still Lake Presbyterian Church started out with a trial basis of five weeks and they've now decided to extend that throughout the season. So now we have a total of 36 $6 vouchers that we hand out to seniors. Now, the seniors are, because we ran out so quickly, they have started to line up at 9:00. Before 9:00, they start lining up. So if you come to the Federal Way Farmers Market and you see this long line of seniors, that's what it's for, is for these $6 vouchers so that they can buy fresh produce. And so, you know, we are trying, our goal is to try to get 50, 50 vouchers. It's a small goal and maybe, you know, eventually it'll be larger. But right now, we just want to have $56 vouchers that we can hand out to seniors each week. And a lot of these seniors are also on EBT cards. So they get their $6 voucher and then they're going to come over and get their EBT. And we match, not we, but the state matches up to $24. So with that, a lot of the seniors don't get that, up to $24. So the numbers are quite large with the food stamps, WIC, senior, or the SNAP program. That's $45,000 worth of food that we've helped people so far this year. And with the healthy kids, that's, they get $5. We have 20 of those, they get $5 each week. And the seniors, that's $3,000 that we've helped with people this year. So I'm asking you that when this comes up on the agenda later today, that you would kindly think of that extra 14 tickets or vouchers for the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Thank you. And thank you for the work, you and Carla and the entire market, the farmer's market team. It's been, the handoff has been a big success, thanks to you and the entire team and Bill Vodino and Parks. Thank you, John. It's been fun to see it and thank you for the word today about these vouchers. Okay, that concludes the pink sheets that I have ready to go. So let's transition now to the consent agenda. Prior to this evening's meeting, received word from Council McDaniel that he would want Item C pulled, Monthly Financial Report. So that will be pulled and we'll have a different presentation. And in fact, what we'll do for that, Director Groom, you prepared a, Director Groom, you prepared a PowerPoint during committee. Why don't we just, when we get to that, I'll have you get to the podium. We'll just make the presentation and we'll go from there. With regard to the other items on consent agenda, I'll read through them and ask if the council members have any other items they would want pulled for separate consideration. Item A, the minutes for the July 15th, 2025 City Council Special Meeting and Regular Meeting. And Item B, vouchers, June 1 through June 30th, and payroll vouchers, June 1 through June 30th. We've talked about Item C. Item D, King County Regional Automated Fingerprint Identification System, otherwise known as AFIS. And Item E, 2025 to 2026 Port of Seattle Economic Development Grant. Council, are there items, any of the items A, B, D, or E you would want pulled for separate consideration? All right, Council President.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I move approval of Items A, B, D, and E.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of those items?
Aye.
Opposed? Those items pass unanimously. All right, to get us started, before we get started with that, Councilor McDaniel, you pulled this item first. Are you okay with hearing the presentation first or did you have specific?
No, the main thing was is not a lot of people show up to the FedRAC nor does the meeting get watched. I think finance is extremely important for the city and for people to know what's going on. So I had it pulled just to have a conversation and then to have people know what the numbers are. And then so they can also know that the next meeting is a big one to show up for FedRAC.
Very good. Okay, so I'll turn it over to you first after the presentation.
Thank you.
Director Groom.
Well, thank you.
And I do want to say, Councilmember, thank you very much for the early heads up so we can be prepared for it and that's always helpful. All right.
Rather than show the entire presentation that I showed, well, no.
Let's just go through it.
Okay. All right. Let's do that, fine. As I showed at FedRAC last time, now actually, national inflation, what I reported last month, or at the most recent FedRAC, was we've had 25 months of inflation under 4%. This morning, the latest inflation figure came out again. That makes it another month of 2.7% inflation. That dotted red line is where the Federal Reserve keeps trying to manage the economy to get down and it has persistently avoided that. So that's why we have not seen interest rates come down. That matters in some things, as we'll see. Regionally, the Seattle Tacoma Bellevue, this inflation figure comes out every other month and we've had 14 months, again, of under 4% inflation. One of the most positive revenues that we have had has been our utility tax revenue and in the most recent budget amendment, we adjusted the budget, we revised our budget upwards. So now you can see that year-to-date, our utility tax is just a little bit unfavorable, not much. And that's because we brought the budget up. Our property tax revenue, it principally comes in two times a year. We see it in April and May, we see it in September and October. That's why in this graph on the lower right that you see, the shaded area is what our budget is. The thin blue line is the cumulative amount that we received last year. And the red line is the trajectory that we're seeing so far this year and we are tracking right on budget. I never have a worry about property tax revenue. We always receive almost exactly what's levied. Our real estate excise tax has been unfavorable. It took a dip in 2023, it took a dip in 2024. This year, it has come back. You can see in June, the red line came up a substantial amount. The graph on the left shows the cumulative six months ending June of the current year and the prior four years. And you can see that, hooray, this year it has come up quite a bit. Now, it's underperforming budget, but it is over prior year. And that's the case for several of our revenues. Because as we look at how the local underlying economy is, part of what we do as we manage the city is we need to make sure that we're in touch and in tune with the underlying economy. Now, what happens when the real estate excise tax revenue falls short? Well, that means that we have to defer the timing of the projects. And this is in its separate fund, it's restricted. So we do have the ability to delay projects so that we stay within the amount of revenue that we receive. I have a little bit different graph here, probably more detail than I need to show at a city council meeting. However, the graph here shows each of the separate months. And this just shows the month of June, how substantially more the gold bar was than the previous months in the same year. And year-to-date, it also has taken an upturn. Permit fees, again, were a little bit unfavorable to budget, but again, were better than prior year. So this one's a little bit tougher to predict. You can't really plan permits, they don't come in 1/12th every month. And then it depends on what projects are going and also depends on the economy. Our interest revenue is just a little bit unfavorable to budget and the reason that is, is because we spent a substantial amount of cash in the beginning of the year. However, interest rates have stayed up high, so that has helped us. And again, the Federal Reserve not lowering rates has worked to our advantage. Lodging tax revenue, this is a much smaller graph. The scale, we only expect to get about 300,000, 330,000 by the end of the year. However, it's another indicator of our economy. This one is favorable to budget and favorable to prior year. Clearly, the hospitality sector has recovered from the pandemic and has gotten stronger since. The biggest one that we watch, this is the biggest scale that we have, this is sales tax revenue. At the moment, we are 3.5% unfavorable to budget. You can see on the blue graph on the left, we're exactly even with the prior year. Just a touch under the prior year. But what I want to draw your attention to is the gold bars, January, February, March, April, May, June. We have had the most recent two months be better than the same months in prior year. This is just an indicator that the sales tax is starting to trend more positively. And this is why we watch it every month. There is no more important indicator for our underlying economy and our budget than sales tax. In summary, REIT and utility tax and lodging tax and property tax are all up over prior year. Sales tax and permit fees are flat. Now, when they're unfavorable to budget, that means that, you know, managing a city, there's always good news and bad news. We have to make sure that we're monitoring every single month. Our departmental budget within the city, all of the managers need to be managing to their budgets and they are. However, we manage on a lag both on our revenues and our expenses. So that's why managing to budget is so important. The mayor and the city administrator and I, we meet regularly to decide, you know, do we need to make course corrections? Do we need, and how much and when? One of the things that we do to manage the budget is, in past years, you've seen that during the mid-year adjustments, we've been able to greenlight some projects. This year, we have not. We maintain a waiting list. And what that does is that parks everything that isn't in the budget in a place where we can prioritize so that when we are able to make changes, we can look at the entire picture and make the most high priority and most urgent things. I will point out that in 20 years of government budgeting, I've seen some tough budget years. 2008, that recession was a tough one and then in 2020 and the pandemic. I don't want to treat the unfavorable budget, the unfavorable revenues lightly. We're looking at them every single month. But again, we have levers that we can, that we can monitor so that we can course correct and we're doing that. I think that is, oh, our outlook. Our departments are managing to budget, we are watching revenue closely. We're being vigilant for surprises because, you know, life has a way of surprising us. We maintain our waiting list. And most importantly, we're being mindful of existing obligations before we greenlight anything new. Any questions?
Council McDaniel.
Yeah, I want to have a follow-up question from the last time we had a meeting on the sales tax. This is the June, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
When we looked at last time on sales tax, your sales tax number was different than the one that was in the packet. Do we know which number is actually accurate now?
Yes, sales tax is, sales tax is behind budget by 450,000. Permits is behind by 312. And I had in the packet, I have to admit, I had a typo because we said that $2 million was due to timing of investment revenue and it's intergovernmental revenue. You know, it's that, it's not auto-correct. Yeah, it kind of is auto-correct, but I didn't catch it on the review. We have a significant amount of reimbursable, when you think of intergovernmental revenue, that's the stuff coming in, federal money, state money, and that's very common for us to have timing differences. So overall, we are watching sales tax most closely.
Gotcha. I only have about three questions then. So my first question is going to be is, have we done a recalculation with the interest or is that something we can even do with the building construction still going on?
I'm still working on updating that.
Okay. Will we have maybe something by FedRAC on that one?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I noticed there was, one of the interesting ones in the small numbers was the traffic lights, safety zones, school zones. That one's down by about a half a million. What, I know that actually, is that restricted completely or is only partially restricted on that one?
It's restricted completely. That's a restricted revenue. It does pay for some PD salaries and some equipment, some vehicles, pays for part of our 911, I believe. And I will point out, that is about safety. We don't, we don't, we don't look to the police or the judicial system or the legislature for revenue. That's all about public safety. I know that our police department and our public works evaluate which intersections needs it most. There is nothing, I've had conversations with PD and also with Judge Larson. I was most interested in my budgeting reasonably and it turns out, I think that my budget was mostly optimistic due to past history. And I think what we're seeing is we're seeing increased compliance on the part of motorists. So that means it's a negative budget revenue.
Lucky us. Last two questions. The next one is going to be, I recently, and I'll talk about this later, I recently have been advised by my financial advisor that I have to now add a 10.3% tax to all my services. How were that new tax that the state has passed, it's going to go into effect real soon for service companies? How is that going to affect the city's sales tax?
I believe that the city's component of the 10.2 is 3.6 or 3.8%. Most of it goes to the state, 6.5% is the state. Does that answer your question?
Close enough for the night. No worries, it's close. I figured that it will make our numbers look better, but at a cost to other people. So, okay, that was my, and the last one is, as of right now, what revenue streams do we have that are favorable to budget?
The favorable ones, I just went through the, I don't, I just went through, I think permits was the, was one that was just barely favorable. Most of them, most of them are coming in just a touch unfavorable, so.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just be.
Gotcha. And then you, in our next FedRAC meeting is when we do one of the quarterly updates and another conversation on the budget, right?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
City Administrator, did I miss anything? Okay.
Councilor Honda.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve, for this additional report. With REIT, the reason I understand REIT was up last month was because we had a large commercial sale.
That's correct.
Do we track as a city, because REIT is so important to us, do we track how many buildings, commercial-sized buildings are on the market? And do we do anything to help those buildings?
I don't even attempt to do that. Even when we're budgeting, if I go back and I try to budget, what I end up doing is I end up taking out all the large transactions because they're so infrequent and difficult. The base of our assessed value is residential and because interest rates are high and mortgage rates are high, the pace of the transactions is what has affected that revenue stream. The underlying, the underlying value is still. The underlying, the underlying value is still there. In fact, it, it went up just a touch this last year, so.
Okay. And then I've been asking for a few months now for a report on how the farmer's market is doing. Since we're not going to have a meeting in August, then that would put that to the end of September, and the market will be done, you know, in October. But it would be nice if we could just have a snapshot of how the, how the market is doing.
Yes, I'd be delighted to that. I, I talked with Bill Bettino frequently, and it, you know, we did a, we did a, a forecast. We brought it as part of our budget amendment as an estimate for how much revenue and how much expenses we wanted to add. And we added a little bit of wiggle room because I think, I think there have been several weeks where it outperformed. We had one due, due to whether, whether it underperformed. But it's, it's.
When is it, when was it due for a report?
I'm sorry?
When was it due for a report to the council?
I don't know that it was actually due.
I have had the best of intentions to bring you, and I haven't, yeah.
All right. Well, we'll get the council an update.
I'll, I'll own that. And I think we can send something out by email. I don't think there's any reason to wait for the next meeting, but to.
We'll do that.
That would be awesome if you could do that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm happy to, yeah, we're happy to do that.
I got to tell you, I, I have, we've, we've all been so impressed with the performance of the, of the farmer's market. John, it looks, well, John's out of the room. There you are in the back. It looks amazing. The tents look amazing. The vitality looks amazing. Big thanks to Vicky and Carla, Bill, and, and everybody that's, that's made that a reality. So, any other questions?
Just on the interfund loan for the Target property, I did ask MRSC after our last meeting if we could go longer than three years. And they said that sometimes that's allowed, but they frown on it. So, I, but I did, I have been doing some research on that, just to let you know.
Yeah, let me tell you, the, the, the three-year guideline for interfund loans, it's not in the state statutes. It's not in RCW. It's a preference of the state auditor. And the reason is because we're showing it on our books as a receivable in one fund and a payable in another fund, and we're calling it a temporary fund, or, I'm sorry, a temporary loan. And after about three years, they frown on that, and they say, well, are we misstating our financials? Because they would like to make sure that our financials represent reasonably the financial condition of the city. If it, after three years, which will come up this, this November, we, what we need to do is we need to reevaluate, what is the likelihood that, that the underlying transaction of the, of the old Target property sells? And we, we take the proceeds to extinguish that. And I've talked to Keith Niven a few times, and I think he gets better to answer that.
Keith, we're, we're talking about Town Center Three, the REIT, the former Target site, and Trent One. My understanding is that they are in a, an effort to collect together capital. Can you tell us about what, what you know are at this stage?
Sure. We had a conversation with them probably a couple of weeks ago, and it was surrounding the federal budget. And part of the budget that President Trump signed on July 4th, I believe, was to make the opportunity zone a permanent part of the tax code. And our downtown area, that census tract is identified as an opportunity zone. So, the opportunity zone that's in place now will sunset at the end of next year. The new version of opportunity zones will start in 2027. The new version is more favorable to investors, to private investors than the current one, which makes 2026 kind of a shadow year. People probably won't be investing in version 1.0 when 2.0 is better. So, we talked about that at length with the developer who we entered into a development agreement with for TC3. And the question I asked to them specifically was, are you now going to ask for us to give you an extension? Because they're supposed to take down the property in 2026. And they said, no, given where we are and their understanding of how the opportunity zone is evolving, they can now go out and talk to investors, and it becomes more appealing as an investment opportunity, the way that the current federal budget has been passed. And so, they can get people lined up for 2027 next year, which would give them the confidence to actually write the check for $10 million for TC3. So, we're expecting that to happen by the end of next year.
And that's a reasonable explanation.
Is that 2026?
Yes.
And that's a reasonable explanation that I can offer to the auditors, why we continue to keep it on our books, and I, and that's, and that's fair.
Going back to, did you have any other questions? How would you characterize the health of our city budget?
Oh, we have a AA2 rating. It's in no danger of, of, of changing. Our cash balance continues to be strong. You know, we, I appreciate that, that we're looking at the yellow flags and the revenues that aren't quite hitting, hitting budget, but we have plenty of levers to course correct. So, we're managing just fine.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Council President.
Thank you. I just have a simple question. I've been meaning to ask you, well, two, actually. But, so the state treasurer, when I was at the Good Eggs Breakfast with the mayor and other council members, mentioned that they invest at a certain interest rate. Can you please tell me what interest rate they do invest our money at, the state?
They invest in a lot of the same things that we do, and it's a very mixed bag. There's treasuries and agencies. They do overnights. Their current, in, in the whole entire state pool, it's getting a, it's giving us a return of, of about 4.4% interest. And I say us because we have 20 million invested in the state pool. So, it's an, but they invest in largely the, the, the same sort of things that we do, just in massively larger quantities.
You know, I don't know if you heard, but I think he said that they were, that their interest rate was 8%. I believe that's what he was saying. I, I'm just curious.
I would disagree with that, but.
Appreciate that because 8% would be risky. 4% would be normal. And what is it we get when we invest our money ourselves? Overall interest rate?
We have between 3% and 5%. We have many different investments. So, it's a, it's, it's also a mixed thing.
Right.
And I will also add, I'm on the advisory committee for Mike Policiati, for the local government investment pool, and we have a quarterly meeting tomorrow, and I'll.
Ask him what, ask him what he was referring to.
Well, the, the interest rate, the interest rate asserting is 4.4%. I just know that. Yeah, I would say that 8% does not make any sense to me. It, now, it might, now, it might have been relating to something, but I can't think of what. Yeah, that's a very healthy.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, because you're right, because that, that interest rate would imply risk.
At any rate, thank you. I'm just curious. So, and then thank you to Bill for all of your work on the farmer's market. I really appreciate that. And the, whether or not we make money on the market, I don't think is pertinent. I, I, I think that even if we lose money, a cer, a small amount. I mean, it's, it's, it's something that our community loves, and it's something where we can gather and have a meetings with folks and actually help people. And by the way, when we get to talking about vouchers for the 14, that's only 504 bucks. Can't you come up with more money than that? Find some for the, for the 14 vouchers. Can you make it triple that, please, or something?
We'll look at it.
Can you think of that?
We'll look at that.
All right. For the people who come in and they want the $6 vouchers to buy produce with.
Government doesn't have a profit motive. We have a community benefit motive. And if we subsidize something a little bit for a large amount of value, that's, that's a policy decision that I think you all support.
So, Vicky, next time you ask, quadruple what you're asking for. That's way too modest.
Easy, Council President.
I know. Well, thank you. But thank you, thank you, Steve.
Councilor Walsh.
Yeah, I was just referring to the, the farmer's market. I, I think that just the goal of breaking even on the farmer's market is a, is a great goal. And, and I agree. I mean, it, it's a huge benefit to the community in, in many ways. And if we, if we do lose a little bit on it, fine, but, but our goal should be to break even and, and still provide that benefit to the community.
Well, we'll get that, we'll get the dollars and cents out to the council, and I thank you very much. Thank you, Steve. Councilmember, did you, did you want to make the motion?
Yeah, and I was just going to mention to Council President, the city portfolio makes 3.805, state makes 4.399, and combined, we make 3.812.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
No problem. Yes, I move approval of consent agenda, item C.
Second.
Let's put a motion to second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Thank you again, everybody. Okay, now we're on to council business, 6A. The Interlocal Agreement with the King County Library System. EJ Walsh, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, members of council. Tonight, I am before you to go over the Interlocal Agreement with King County Library System. So, a little bit of background, this is a contract we have, or similar contract to what we have with other nonprofits. And this one, the caveat to that is this one, since the library system is a pseudo-government agency within King County, it does require an interlocal agreement. So, this is a fairly benign contract, but since it is with another government agency, it is required to come before you. So, the policy question is, should the city council authorize entering into an interlocal agreement with King County Library System to provide event collaboration hosting for waste reduction events? So, as background, this is a cooperative agreement. What that means is we are not paying them. They are not paying us. This is a, an agreement to share resources. So, we have, as a city, received grant funding through King County that covers the same events, which is where the no-trading money comes into it. So, we also have, as I mentioned, the same arrangement with other local agencies and nonprofits. So, we have the same with Skittle and El Centro and the Cremona's Women's Association, are three of them. We will, similar to those arrangements, we will cooperate to provide education and outreach events to serve residents a federal way. That's, that is the target audience for this, specifically around waste reduction. So, the interlocal agreement, as I mentioned, the King County Library System is a voter-established, property tax-funded, and that's an important part of this. That's what makes them an interlocal agency under the state regulations. So, as such, we are required to process this as an interlocal governmental agreement, which requires us to come to council, even though there's no funding changing hands. So, the options considered are to authorize entering into an interlocal agreement with the King County Library System. Option two is to do not enter the interlocal agreement and provide direction to staff. The mayor's recommendation is option one, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We've got Councilmember Honda, Councilwoman McDaniel, and then the Council President. Councilor Honda.
Thank you. So, is this going to be educational, where they will have flyers and things in the library? Or will it be a donation spot for tires or something, or?
Neither. So, this is event-based. So, this is, you know, sign up to take a class. So, it, it is things like, you know, learning how to compost in your backyard, is learning how to repurpose something that's in your house. And it is not media in a display case, and it, it, it's not drop-off events like tires. It is in line with some of the events that are at Skittle, if you're familiar with those, where they're, you know, you RSVP and you show up and you learn how to garden, you learn how to transplant plants, you learn how to do something that revolves reduction of waste. So, it's those type of actual drop-in events.
So, we'll still have an agreement with South King Tool Library to do the same type of thing?
Correct. This is an expansion, not a, not a change. So, this is, this is adding another agency.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman McDaniel.
My question is that same one, so.
Okay, great, great. Council President?
Just simply going to make a motion to move approval in a local agreement with King County Library System and authorize the mayor to execute that agreement.
Second.
Let's put a motion to second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matter passed unanimously. Thank you, EJ. All right. Now, we are on to item B, authorization to replace and surplus Parks Kubota Number 91092. EJ?
So, good evening. As the mayor said, this one is not quite as exciting as the last one, but also critically important. So, the policy question is, should the city council authorize replacement of Parks Kubota 91092 and surplus of the existing equipment? So, that is a picture of the machine when it was new. Unfortunately, it doesn't quite look like that now, but it is a RTV 500 side-by-side with a dump bed. So, you've probably seen these in Celebration Park, driving around, doing everything from picking up trash to moving line trimmers around and moving staff around on the BPA trail. We, as a city, have multiple of these. They're used every day, pretty much literally seven days a week, for maintenance operations, namely for moving equipment and, and trash. We do use them year-round. So, in the winter, they are set up to clear snow, spread salt, et cetera. Unit 91092 specifically was purchased in 2019. Originally, it wasn't set to be replaced until 2027. This machine does have a little bit over 2,400 hours of, of runtime on it, which is considered moderate use. I mean, it's definitely not new by any stretch of the means, but it's not considered excessive wear either. So, while this was in use, the machines shut down unexpectedly. City staff went out, had to yank it back to the yard to be able to diagnose it. When they diagnosed it, there was a loss of compression in the engine. It wouldn't turn anymore and wouldn't power the transmission. Staff spent a little bit of time trying to troubleshoot it. We have a relationship with one of the Kubota dealers locally, so we took it to them. And the diagnosis was that the engine had failed, specifically two of the camshafts. So, it's beyond repair. Additionally, beyond that, when they started looking into it, they told us that the transmission's just about failed, the exhaust is failed, and the rear lights need to be replaced. We stopped them because we didn't want to keep paying them to diagnose something at that point, knowing that the engine had failed. So, we don't completely know the extent of damage to the transmission, other than that will become important in a second. So, we did get a quote from them of what would be involved to replace the engine. To replace it in kind in the existing machine is about $9,500 between purchasing the new engine, the labor to remove the existing one, and put a new one in. That does not include replacing or repairing the transmission, and that's kind of where that becomes important. That's, that's a fairly big bill as well. Via the federal contract, we can buy a new one for $13,224. So, to repair, replace the engine, repair the transmission, we're going to be in excess of that. So, that was the point. We kind of called timeout, said we need to regroup on this. So, we started looking at what would be involved in replacing it. And to be very clear, there is no request for additional general fund revenue associated with this, next part of this conversation, nor will there be as part of a budget request in the future. So, within the fleet funds, this 2019 vehicle has accrued a little over $5,000 of replacement reserves. We are proposing to use that towards replacement of this machine. Within the fleet repair operating accounts, we have, if you remember the bucket truck, when we had to replace that unexpectedly a couple of years ago, and we've had a couple other pieces of equipment over the years that failed unexpectedly. What we've done is we've taken the delta between the repair cost and what is accrued in the equipment reserves and paid that out of the fleet repair operating account as, basically as if we were to replace the engine. And that's kind of how we've balanced the funding. So, that number would be $4,416. The balance comes from the department that is responsible for that piece of equipment. In this case, that would be the Parks Department. And they are responsible for the balance between the aforementioned money and the total replacement cost. In this case, that's about $3,700, which in talking to Director Hutton, who I think Which in talking to Director Hutton, who I think is hiding, oh, he's over there, that is something that can come out of the Parks operating budget with no overall impact. So given that the, to repair the transmission and the engine would be more than to just replace the entire machine, the recommendation to council is to replace it entirely and then surplus the existing machine. The surplus value that we get, which will be nominal, frankly, I mean, this machine's not worth a whole lot in its current condition, that will be accrued back to the replacement reserves for the new machine. So that, you know, if we get $500 for it, that'll effectively be put right back into the replacement value, which is the same way we've done this in the past. So we're not doing anything different than what we've done for past equipment. I will say this, as I started with, this is a piece of equipment that is used in Celebration Park every day. So frankly, not really having it is creating hardships for the Parks Department, and that is also why this didn't wait for the September LETC meeting and go through the normal process that is before you tonight. With that being said, the options considered is to authorize the replacement and surplus of the existing equipment, or to not authorize the replacement and to provide direction to staff. The mayor's recommendation is option one, and I am happy to answer any questions.
All right. Councilwoman Honda?
Thank you. How many of these do we have in our system? And are they all about the same point in time when they will need to be replaced?
No. We've intentionally been staggering all of our equipment that is the same. So whether it's the, from the largest plow trucks to the, literally the pushmowers, historically the city did buy stuff in bulk in certain years. We, since 2017, 2018, have been getting away from that. We've been extending the lifespan as we can. That way, we don't have everything being the same year, intentionally for this reason. We have four of them that I can put my hands on, as I'm standing here right now, thinking of. I believe we actually have six in the inventory that are used on a daily basis. This is the only one that's a 2019. So I think the oldest one was 2017, and we have a 2024.
Was there a warranty?
There is warranties for these. This warranty is expired, it's a two-year warranty, similar to a car.
How long will it, how fast will it take to get the replacement?
There is one available to us sitting in Issaquah that if we get authorization, our fleet manager will be calling at 6:00 a.m. tomorrow morning to ask when we can pick it up.
All right, thanks.
Councilwoman McDaniel?
Yeah, real quick, what is the average amount of hours roughly? If it's 2,400, what do they usually get before they?
Anywhere from 2,000 to 5,000. So this is, it's in the window, but it's certainly on the low end of the window. But, you know, it's a diesel engine, it's a small block, small cell diesel engine. So it, you know, there's a lot of variability in that. And like I said, these are run hard. I mean, they're towing constantly, they're constantly filled up with dirt and trash and everything in between. We're not easy on these machines.
Oh, I totally understand that. And then my other question is, with these smaller vehicles, do we do preventive maintenance on them, or do we kind of like burn these and go to the next one, on these smaller vehicles?
No, we do preventive maintenance on everything in our system. So they get oil changes four times a year, they get completely torn apart twice a year and rebuilt. Now, we have full-blown preventive maintenance on everything.
Gotcha. And is it, is there more value in the parts keeping it for a spare, or is it better just to?
No, no. We looked at it. Basically, everything that has value is pretty well.
Doesn't affect that picture anymore, huh?
So, yeah. So I mean, typically, I mean, we obviously surplus a fair amount of equipment. Typically, with something like this, we'll get someone that wants to have a project for their, with them and their kid, and someone will pay us, my guess is 500 to 1,000, to be able to rip apart an engine with their son, daughter, whatever the case may be. We also get, on occasion, I doubt we will with this one, but a lot of our F-150s get purchased by like Bates Technical Institute, or Renton Community College, or one of those, and they get put into those inventories to, specifically for teaching people, A, this is what happens when something goes wrong, but also to teach how, whether it's change oil, electrical, whatever, they don't operate them. They want carcasses of vehicles to be able to have for their students.
I didn't have a question until you just mentioned that. I know the school is actually moving towards more of those kind of classes. Do they ever reach out to us for vehicles or anything for projects for their students?
No, they've got enough of their own vehicles that they use. We have been talking to them about more of a, internship's not the right word, but more of a program to get some of the students involved, actually helping. So those conversations have been going on, but no, not. The school district has their own fleet of vehicles that they use those.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Coachmar, do you have a, excuse me, council president, Coachmar, do you have a motion?
That's okay, call me anything you want. You know, the Federal High School is now getting a diesel engine to repair from our new, what's it called, across from the freeway?
Pape, Pape donated them. It's a brand-new engine, but yes. It's super exciting.
I don't know if you want to deal with Federal High School as well as Renton and Bates, but.
Yeah, so Renton and Bates buy our vehicles through the surplus program. That's our connection there.
Okay, appreciate that. Well, thank you very much, E.J. Mayor, I move to authorize staff to replace Parks Kubota 91092 and surplus the existing equipment.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, thank you, E.J. Item C, 2024 ADA retrofit program project award, Charzki Kinlock, civil engineer.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, and council members, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to present on my 2024 ADA retrofits. We just opened bids for this project recently, on July 31st. Our bids came in around, we had a bid ranging in a variety of ranges, but our lowest bid was from Cali Denny Construction out of Carbonado at $249,905. This project, to give you a little bit of a background, it's, we looked at a variety of ranging ADA improvements in city center. We wanted to score these based on proximity to city center and cross slopes and running slopes that were out of ADA compliance. And so that is how we chose these seven locations in city center. As far as a financial summary, our lowest bid came in at $249,905. With a 10% contingency and construction management and inspection, this comes out to around a $316,000 anticipated expenditure for these improvements. Our available revenue for this project, we have $100,000 from the lift sales tax, we have $150,000 from the REIT tax, the real estate excise tax, and we also are transferring $66,000 from the 306 Fund to give us the total revenue available of $316,000, which is equal to that of our anticipated expenditure. Here is a, thank you. Here's a map again of the improvements, seven major intersections, seven locations, 13 ramp improvements. These are our two options. Award the 2024 ADA retrofits to Cali Denny Construction, the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, in the amount of $249,950, with a contingency of $24,990.50 for a maximum contract amount of $274,000 and or $95.50. And we'd also authorize transfer of $66,000 from the Transportation Capital Improvement Fund, the 306 Fund, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Option two is to reject all bids for the 2024 ADA retrofits and provide direction to staff. The mayor recommends option one, and are there any questions?
Councilwoman McDaniel?
I only got two questions. My first one is, this one came at 250, rounding up.
Yeah.
Next one was like the 280, then 430, then 450. There's some big jumps moving up.
Yes, absolutely.
And then the line item I have a consideration or concern about is 30 traffic signal systems. These guys came at 26. Then it's 35, 40, and 47. There's like $20,000, minimum 10 to 20,000. Why is there such big differences? And is there a concern that we should have with the traffic signal system being so much lower than the other bids?
This bid item is to cover our pedestrian push-button improvements. We have a lot of buttons that are not in the correct or compliant locations anymore. And so when we're improving these ramps, we want to upgrade the button and the panel, get it all to the new standard. And part of the reason this varies so much is some of the electrical work, some of these contractors maybe have more experience or less experience, and they feel more confident or less confident in these scenarios. And some of these are major intersections, some of them are on pack highway, and I can anticipate some contractors seeing some potential conflicts or issues and want to bid this item higher to potentially cover those costs, so.
So no need for any concern about the mass, the differences?
I personally didn't have any concern when seeing them. We kind of expected this for this project, it was a little bit smaller, so we were going to get higher ranges. Another item you could see with a large range is traffic control. A lot of these items are on pack highways, we had contractors coming in with different opinions on what it would take to do the proper traffic control for this project. So with these, kind of the smaller unit amounts, we did expect a little bit larger ranges.
All right, hey, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Sevedaussen?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you tell me how these areas or locations were identified?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then after that, do we have other areas that we're going to be looking at that are already?
In the future?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I worked with our asset management coordinator to look at, we had an intern last year who went through a lot of the ADA ramps in city center and a lot of the entire city, actually, and he looked at cross slopes and running slopes of the road to determine whether these ramps were out of compliance, and if so, how much out of compliance. And then we also compared that to high-traffic pedestrian routes, seeing where people were going the most, what, if we improved, what had the most impact, what would we see that would be the most positive impact on the community? And that, through a spreadsheet, gave us these scores that we were able to then pick the highest-scoring ramps within budget to be part of this project. And we can go down and select the next set of ramps for next time and do that. And that analysis is something I think we're doing constantly, and so that list will continue to update.
Okay. And if there's budget under, if we're under budget?
Yes.
Where does the money go back to first? Is there like, does it go to the general funds, or would it go back to these different?
No, so all of these are restricted funds, so it'll effectively go in reverse order. So if there is underage, the first one that'll be reimbursed is the 306.
306?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Honda?
Thanks. On the 312th, where is that location? Is that 28?
22nd.
22nd? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Council, any other questions? Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to award the 2024 ADA retrofits to Cali Denny Construction Incorporated, the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, in the amount of $249,905, with a contingency of $24,990.50 for a maximum contract amount of $274,895.50. To authorize the transfer of $66,000 from the Transportation Capital Improvement Fund, Fund Number 306, and authorize the mayor to execute said contract.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Just ready to vote, okay, all right. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Great job, Charzki.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we are on to item D, Tourism Enhancement Grant Recommendation, Federalway Public Market Business Plan and Marketing Outreach. Meredith Neal, our Economic Development Director. Meredith?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here tonight to review a grant recommendation with you for the Federalway Public Market Business Plan and Outreach. So this is an item that came before the FedRAC Committee. The policy question tonight is whether the City of Federalway should approve the grant recommendation for the Federalway Public Market Business Plan and Marketing Outreach. The request that originally came in was for a tourism enhancement grant through the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. It was a request for $26,000 for community and business outreach about economic and cultural benefits of the Federalway Public Market as part of their business plan. On July 8th, that came to the LTAC Committee meeting, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee reviewed the request and moved to recommend fully funding that request and passed it along to the Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee. At that FedRAC meeting on July 22nd, the FedRAC Committee reviewed it and expressed concerns about eligibility for lodging tax funds, since this facility that is proposed is still in the planning stages and has not yet opened. So therefore, the FedRAC Committee requested funding by a grant from the Economic Development General Fund, rather than through an LTAC Tourism Enhancement Grant. So here is what we are now proposing for funding. We propose a grant that would be funded from the Fund Set Aside for Economic Development Business Enterprise Startup. There are $40,000 in funds available that were set aside for business enterprise startup in 2023. They were intended for a program to provide education, advancement, and ongoing support to startups in federal way, and those funds have not been used or obligated in any way. We believe that redirecting these business enterprise startup support funds to the public market project would make sense, as their plan includes support of small business startup education and support for them moving forward. So that would, with that $26,000 that is requested, it would leave $14,000 available within that fund. So the options to consider are option one, to approve the proposed grant recommendation for the Federalway Public Market Business Plan and Marketing Outreach, utilizing the Economic Development and Business Enterprise Startup Funds, or option two is to not approve the proposed grant recommendation and provide other direction to staff. The mayor's recommendation is option one, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Okay. Council President Coachmar?
Thank you. I move to fund the Federalway Public Market Business Plan and Marketing Outreach Program from the Economic Development Budget in the amount of $26,000.
Second.
It's been a motion in multiple seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Great job, Meredith.
Thank you.
And congratulations to our folks at Public Market. Thank you. Okay, item E, additional funding for the Federalway Farmers Market Senior Food Vouching Program.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell.
Just to, I want to make sure everybody understands, you know, we've got the farmers market that we do every weekend. The farmers market, I believe, is in its 22nd year, and the city just took that over. That's separate and distinct from the public market that we're looking forward to. I want to make sure, because sometimes there's some confusion, and I want to make sure that the public at home and the public here knows that what we're talking about is now the farmers market. So with that, Amy Glendon will provide executive assistant to the council, will provide a report in regard to the Farmers Market Senior Food Vouching Program. Amy?
Good evening, Mayor Farrell. Council President Coachmar and council members, thank you for having me tonight. Tonight, I'm bringing before you a recommendation from the Senior Advisory Commission. We were fortunate enough to have Vicki Chinowith join us at our meeting back in July regarding the senior food voucher program. What this program is, as she mentioned earlier, it's a $6 voucher that seniors can sign up for and receive to go towards the vendors at the farmers market. It's a small amount of money, but to seniors with food insecurity, it's a huge improvement to their circumstances. There are a number of reasons why seniors are experiencing food insecurity, and it is happening here in federal way as well. There's an estimate from Northwest Harvest that over 22% of seniors are currently living with food insecurity, and over 33% of them are under the very poverty, like the lowest poverty line. Our seniors are pretty vulnerable, and it's hard for a lot of them to ask for help or to reach out with a need, and this is a really great way that the city can involve themselves to give back to the senior community. This came to the Senior Advisory Commission primarily because it's the special interest of the Senior Advisory Commission. One of their biggest missions is to improve and enrich the health and well-being of the senior community here in federal way. We have an ability within the senior commission with an access of a restricted or a reserve fund. This fund was created with our Senior Health and Resource Fair three years ago, with vendors and sponsorships that came in to be part of this. At that time, these funds were used on that event and rolled over to our next year. With speaking with finance a few years ago, these funds could not be touched for anything other than a direct senior outreach program, because that was the spirit of which they were given by the outside agencies. To clarify, this is not city, like, general funds that were created for this fund, this is outside agencies that paid into the city to be part of the event. Over the last three years, we've accumulated a reserve account with about $4,700 in it. The senior commission felt it was a really great investment into our seniors within federal way to put money towards this. Council President, you mentioned earlier, to make a bigger investment, that was the original spirit for the senior commission as well, the recommendation they wanted to do. However, we weren't sure how this was going to work, so we asked for a $504 investment from that fund to get Vicki and the farmers market up to their 50 vouchers per week. And that's what I'm bringing to you tonight, is a request to honor the recommendation to approve funding, additional funding from this reserve account to the Federalway Farmers Market Senior Food Voucher Program.
Council President, did you have a comment?
Well, I'm wondering, Mayor, if it's possible to add $1,000 to their request from perhaps a different account, which might be an account you might be able to find money from.
Let's park that. Steve, be ready for a question. I've actually... I've actually, we've got Councilmember Honda and the Councilmember Daniel, Councilmember Sephardosan. So I'll call on you in a minute. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. So one day, I was at the farmers market at the booth and talking with Vicki and Carla and realized that the vouchers for the senior food vouchers were gone. And it was maybe 9:30. And I came in to Amy and I said, could we use, you know, if the commission wanted to, could we use some of the money that we have in the commission to increase these vouchers? Because $6 doesn't seem like very much, but if you're hungry, it's a lot. And when we have seniors lining up early in the morning to get a $6 voucher, let's have it available. I initially wanted it to be $10 or $15. Carla did not go for that. But I'm hoping if we do this program next year, and I do hope that we do it, we could go at least for $10 a voucher. You know, the day that I was talking to Carla and Vicki about it, I looked at one of the farmers booths and celery was $5.99 a bunch. So vegetables are very fresh, but they can be a little bit pricey at the market. Amy did her due diligence. She went to staff and a staff member said yes. It went to the Senior Commission. They liked the idea. They wanted to try it out. And then at, I think, the last FedRAC meeting, I asked what the holdup was. And one of the council members thought it was best that the council vote on this and that the commission, because commissions are not allowed to vote on things like this. So anyway, that's why it's here in front of council. I am hoping that it passes tonight and that we can have these vouchers. I know they're ready to go. I know they're printed and they're ready to go Saturday at the farmers market so we can help the seniors who need the help the most. Because they need these. They're there on Saturday. And it's a very important thing to be helping the seniors. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, thank you. Counselor Daniel?
Yeah, my first question is actually, this account, I heard is a rollover. Is this a one-off account that's designed this way where the money would roll over? Or do we have this set up for other commissions?
I think we just keep track of how much money that commission brings in and how much they spend. And it's not something that has its own separate fund. So it's part of the general fund. But it is, it does have a restricted nature. So I think that they're trying to come to you for approval, and that would just fit within our budget.
No worries. The reason I'm asking that is because I've talked to, I've heard other groups have the same kind of questions about arts. If they have extra money that's been made, what do they do with that one? Diversity Commission had a little extra cash and now they want to do some books. So it's, I know there's other grumblings or talkings or discussions about this. So I was wondering if this was a normal configuration or if it was something different. And then you guys said you started at 504. Is there more in the account that could be given?
I think they're trying to make sure that the restricted money that they bring in is given approval to spend in this way. The mayor was just pointing to me of, you know, if we could find another, any other money in the general fund. And of course, the mayor is in charge of administering a $200 million budget. This, however, is a restricted revenue that they're trying to make sure that they spend with the right authorization as it's intended.
No, I totally understand. I'm just asking if there's more than $504 that could be directed towards it from that fund?
From what they brought in?
I can take that, Steve.
Yeah, yeah.
Currently, there is a balance of $4,709.53 in that.
If there's, if the question of $1,000 has been added, is that something that could be done here or does that have to go through something else?
Is there any, let's get to, first of all, let's get to, is, could we use, just legally, or do we have another $1,000 we could throw at this from that account? Steve?
We could use that money or you could, you could direct me to take $1,000 out of my budget in my department if that was your discretion.
Well, yeah, right. We've got pockets everywhere. I mean, we could come out of my budget or the mayor's budget. Would that be, but, Counsel President?
And that was my request to have it from the mayor's. That's why I was kind of kidding you a little bit.
Oh, I see. I was a little slow.
She had her hand in your pocket.
Exactly.
Annie just up a little. But yeah, no, I was saying, no, they're very careful with the small amount that they have. But the mayor has more money. Let's get the mayor.
Could we have, before we decide on how much extra, could we make sure that it covers every Saturday from now, this Saturday, until the end of the market so that we have enough and we don't need to come back to council and ask for more money?
Yeah.
I don't do math, so whoever can do math.
Is the full 4,000 available, just out of curiosity?
In theory, it is. This is, this is the remaining balance after all of our debts for the 2025 Senior Health and Resource Fair were expended. Like, this is what's left over to roll over to 2026.
And we could, we could actually add another 1,000 from the mayor's and make it an even five. I think that's a very worthy program. My question is if we, you know, if we, would this take some reconfiguring? Or if we, if we put some, you know, if we put an additional 1,000, whatever the source, whether it's from that fund or the mayor's fund, you know, is there, would it take a little bit while to figure out how many, you know, how many you would do? Or I guess maybe the question also was, you know, how many, how much would you need to be able to fund the rest of the year?
So I can't answer that right now. But it's, I know it's $6 per voucher, and I think that I don't know how many weekends are left.
And by the, right. So we've got, let me ask, Bill, could you go, can you go to the podium? Or actually, I'm sorry.
I have 11 Saturdays left. Is that true, Vicki?
Vicki, actually, could you approach the podium where he could have you?
Are there 11 Saturdays left?
Let's have both Vicki and Bill Vedino. Bill's been the lead. Bill, you want to address this?
So to give you the overall picture, the hospital gives us $5,000, okay? 2,500 of that goes toward $6 coupons every week through the whole market. And I think that's, let me see here. I can't quite figure out how many. It's something like 15 per market. They also give $2,500 for $5 coupons for youth of 20 per market. Okay, then recently, Steel Lake Presbyterian gave us first $600, which added $20 per market for five weeks for seniors. And now they have just given us a check to continue for the rest of the market, $1,320, which gets us through the rest of the market, 20 coupons per market. So that's what is happening now. And the Senior Commission's desire was, let's get this even higher.
And Bill, you just divide the, Bill, this is Steve from finance. And you just divide those amounts by the number of market days? So you make it last the entire season?
Correct. And, and just to give you an example, starting next week, $1,320 is going to provide enough, 20 coupons per market for the rest of the season.
And Bill, could you explain again what Carla's role in this, what her recommendation was? What, because there was a, there was some discussion about Carla and her recommendation. What was the?
Oh, okay, what, okay. We have a precedent that over the years, the hospital's given us between 10,000 and 5,000 a year. And in order to have that stretch, it came up, and this is years and years and years precedent, $6 for the seniors and $5 for the, for the, for the youth. And so what Carla was responding to was the program, not that she couldn't do it. And I think that's what Councilmember Honda meant. It's just the way the program has been set up over the years that we traditionally are doing, $6 for seniors and $5 for youth. However, that doesn't mean we can't enter into a discussion for next year to make that a different total and get more sponsors and so that it's maybe $10. But right now, we're working within the precedent.
Vicki, do you have anything to add to all that? Or, and with regard to, I think you're, what you're seeing, what you're hearing, I think your comments earlier this evening have, and Amy's work as well has paid off. But if, we've established that the 4,000 is available for this, that there's only a request at this stage for 500 more of that. Vicki, what are your thoughts on where we stand right now in these discussions?
So my thoughts are, you know, if, if we went up to $10, what if the seniors weren't able to, to give us any funds next year? What if Steel Lake Presbyterian Church was not able to? Then we're back down to the $6, and then the seniors are used to the $10. So at this point, I'm, I think that the $6 vouchers through the end of the year until we can at least be guaranteed or, nothing's guaranteed in life, but you know, that we're able to see that this, these funds would be able to pass through next year.
I think the council president wants to jump in, then we'll head to, we'll head to Councilmember Sephardosan.
Oh, I still.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So I had follow-up questions on that one. So first of all, I'm going to say it just needs to be at least $1,500. That's my, just two cents.
Yeah.
But when we went and had our council meet, not meeting there, but a get-together there, I talked to quite a few seniors, and quite a few of them told me how they, they look for $9 meals. They go around the city looking for $9 meals. And then when I had this brought up to me, Amy, if you don't mind stepping back up, can you tell, tell us all what one resident did say to you about this program?
Absolutely. I have a resident who's been attending our Senior Commission meetings. And she joined me in my office, and it was on a Monday. So it was following a farmers market. And she had gotten one of the vouchers. And she came in and she was tickled, and she was so excited because she said, "I got two tomatoes, a carrot, and a watermelon for my week." And it made her week. We're talking about, for me, like, two carrots, or a carrot and two tomatoes and a watermelon for my boys is hardly even a snack, let alone something to last them a week. And this is, this lasted her, this was for her week. And it really helped take some pressure off, some pressure in her house.
Thank you.
Counselor Sephardosan.
Yeah, a lot of my questions were either addressed or answered, but I honestly would think it should go up to $10. Like, like you just said, I mean, what is that for a week? And food has gone up, so the precedence that we're talking about, where it was maybe $6 in the past, doesn't even go anywhere. It doesn't stretch. So I would suggest, let's do the math. 11 more weeks left, right? And so add the number of vouchers up to 10 and see how that goes. And I'm not going to worry about 2026 because that would take care of itself somehow, somewhere. But I'm already concerned of the people who need it now.
So may I, so we are out of vouchers by 9:30. That's 36 vouchers gone by 9:30. So if, we're trying to help as many people as possible. So if you, what, how many would we have if you, if you made it $10?
And still increase the budget is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Increase the number of vouchers, but $10 each is what I'm saying. And see how that goes.
How many do you think we should have extra?
Well, it's hard to say because we have people coming to us all day long looking for those vouchers. We have seniors walking up to us all day long looking for those vouchers. So, you know, it's, it's hard to say.
How many do you think we turn away?
We probably turn away at least 15 to 20 people a day or a week.
Okay, that's how.
Oh, that's funny. Kind of matches my numbers.
Okay, actually, Counsel President, why don't we, why don't we start with a, let's see if, hold on a second. Let's see, why don't we just start off with making a motion, see where we go from there? Counsel President?
Well, yeah, so I was running some numbers here. So you could have six more without getting into all that. It doesn't matter. My thought really is just to get another $1,000. I would like to just make an amendment to the motion as is because you've probably already printed some coupons for next week. So you probably have 10 after next week.
We can print more.
Good answer. I just want to make a motion to add $1,000 from the mayor's budget to what's already being, an amendment to the motion to add that to the amount and let you figure out how to hand that out in the way of vouchers.
Okay, that's the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. So the motion, as I understand it, is to not only approve this 50504, but to add 1,000 in the sourcing would be from, from the mayor's budget. Councilmember Sephardosan, did you have a question?
Yeah. $1,000 seems like an arbitrary number. I would like it to really be a mathematical, whether it's $6 or $10, times 11 weeks, times however many people are not getting it, you know, total of number of people who need it.
It's 14 weeks.
14?
How did I miscount?
14 weeks. And you said 15 more people needed. How many do we give out?
20 people need it.
20 more? A total of 20 people.
So that's 50, how many a week?
30. It would be around 60.
Okay. So does anybody have their, 60 times 14, what is that?
So may I ask a question? So if, if someone up here is going to make an amendment to have the voucher $10 and not 6, we would need to make all the vouchers $10 because we couldn't have 20 that are 10 and the rest 6.
They'd have to all be 10.
That's right.
Right. So, so my.
So we need someone who's going to do math to make the, make sure that this is an accurate number.
Hold on, the council president has a point. Hold on.
Well, it's just, it's 166 more vouchers. $1,000 divided by 6 is 166 more vouchers. For $6 vouchers, that gives you 166 more people that you can serve over the next number of weeks that you have.
But Council President, let me ask you this. Would you be amenable to?
I'm amenable to anything.
To move the $6 up to 10 per voucher?
Well, they're having a problem with the 10 because they've already said they want more people to be served. That's their issue. They run out of money at 9:30, correct? And so, yeah, we want to, can they come back and get two vouchers?
No, that's why, so we have, we have, everyone has to sign in. They have to sign their name and put their age because they have to be 65 years or older. We have them sign their name just so we can, you know, if, if they came back again, we try to watch, you know, to make sure that they don't come once.
And you're turning, you're turning away 10 to 20 people per week.
15 to 20 at least.
15 to 20. Okay, so, so at $6 per voucher, for $1,000, you can get 166 more vouchers, divided by however many weeks that are left, that gives you more people. I mean, if you want to increase the money, I'm good with that, so.
My, yeah.
Hold on, Counselor Honda.
I'm wondering if we could table this so someone can actually do the math so we know exactly what to put into this motion, otherwise?
Yeah, maybe like for tonight.
For tonight?
Yeah.
Because I want this on Saturday.
Why don't we do this? And actually, Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, which is the greater benefit? To have a greater, greater benefit overall, to have a greater number of, no matter what the amount that we end up funding with, are we most helpful to have more $6 vouchers or not as many $10 vouchers? I mean, helping more people at $6 or helping fewer people more at $10? Which, which is the, which would provide the most benefit overall?
Well, we're always trying to help the most people because the need is great here in the City of Federal Way or probably anywhere. But the need is great. So I think to, to help more people would be my answer.
Go ahead, Counselor Sephardosan.
It doesn't have to be 6 or 10. It could be any number.
Any between 6 and 10. But like, like Susan said, let somebody do the math and see what the difference is going to be.
You know what I would suggest? May I, may I suggest something? Brian, could you, Vicki, Bill, Amy, perhaps go on to help us? Take out a couple of calculators and, and let's do some quick math about, and maybe come with a meeting of the minds. Can we table, logistically here, there's a motion before the body. But can we table the discussion for a few moments until we get some math and more of a solid recommendation?
I can do that. Can I counter? And just say, why don't we just fund Saturday or for the next time until we meet? And then we'll get more, get the numbers complete for the rest of the season after that.
But we're not, this is our only meeting in August.
Right, but I'm saying, fund the next however many weeks until we meet again. And then we can get more refined numbers. Because, yeah, we can do that, but I feel like this is a little bit.
But maybe, but we'll probably need some math on that.
We would.
Yeah, I mean, even, even on that limited number.
Yeah.
So we'll need to, Counselor Sephardosan, did you have a?
No, I know he has an agenda item, so I wanted to make sure, coming up also.
Keith can cover me.
Counselor Groom?
I mean, it's just a letter.
You're not a council member yet, sorry. Finance Director Groom.
From a finance standpoint, we're looking at authorizing the restricted revenue.
The, the amount that comes out of the mayor's budget is always within your discretion, so if you approve what's coming out of the restricted revenue, then you could move forward on your own to, to make a difference.
Okay. Brian, could you, can you maybe articulate what, what would be a po, what would be a possible mo, actually, Ryan?
Just, I, just to restate what Steve just said, I'm not sure if that sunk in. We're only here tonight to, for council's motion on this restricted money. Any amount up to $20,000, the mayor can just spend out of his own budget without council's intervention. So I'm not sure it's really that, if, if council's expressed an interest in expanding this program, the mayor can just make that happen.
But I, but I think it's, I appreciate that, and I, but I think it's clear, it's important to have the body and also the public know that, and also get clear direction on where we're gonna be.
Fair enough. Also, I would point out, there's, the concern was that there's an arbitrary number. They're all arbitrary numbers. Picking a number and setting a budget is how we usually do this, and then we serve as many people as we can within that budget. So I'm not sure all of this obsession about the numbers is really that practical. I mean, just my point.
Why don't we do this? Can we, can we, we'll set this matter aside for a few moments. Is that, is that allowed under Roberts?
Yeah, can we make a motion to set aside and?
And then, and then we'll bring it back tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do this. Brian, also Steve Groom, Vicky, Bill, Amy, if you could retire into the, into the jury deliberation room, in the, the Hilebus room, let's come with a reasonable plan in regard to, let's, let's take a few moments, take out a calculator, let's think it through, and then come back, and we'll, we'll handle the other matters. Council president?
So may, do you want me to go ahead and table the motion until they come back?
Yeah, let's make that motion real quick.
I, I make a motion to table this particular issue until these folks return to the podium.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and second to temporarily table, or table the matter of just for this meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Okay, so now we'll hold on that. And now we've got Ryan call. You notice, Ryan, I did not have you go back there. Item F, this is the 2025-2027 labor contract with Teamsters Local Unit Number 117, representing police lieutenants. Ryan?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening. As the mayor said, I'm here to present a labor contract with Teamsters Local Union, Number 117, representing police lieutenants. By way of background, all the lieutenants that work for the police department are represented by the Teamsters 117. We have a, two negotiation teams that meet, one from labor and one from the city. The city's labor negotiation team is comprised of the HR director, myself, and then we have one representative from the department of, the depart, department rep for the affected department. Most of the time it's police. In this case, it was a deputy chief. We negotiated with this group for some time and quickly got down to one issue, which is the issue that we always have at the end of the day, which was wages. The parties agreed to submit their, submit the negotiation to a PERC, which is the public, State Public Employment Relations Commission, who provides mediators to try to help resolve these issues without going to arbitration. We met with the mediator and the union, and the city's negotiation teams came to an agreement. So we're here to present the agreement tonight. It's important to note that the lieutenants have already voted on this contract and approved it. So I've talked to council about this in executive session. Nothing has changed from what we talked about in executive session. This is mostly for public benefit that I'm going over these numbers again. The contract contemplates three years. Only two of them have we talked about wages. So 2025 would be a 3.5% COLA, which is consistent with what other labor groups have negotiated, as well as the unrepresented, the planned budget for unrepresented employees. Scheduled step increases would be included, and then there's a $500 per year VIBA contribution that we are proposing. The total cost for the contract would be 3.04 million for '25. There we go. The next year is slightly larger number because we apply the COLA increase to the previous number that was increased in '25. So the new number for '26 would be 3.27 million dollars with the same adjustment. So another 3.5% COLA for the '26 year scheduled step increases and a $500 VIBA. In addition, we have agreed to increase the annual clothing allowance from $200 per person to $300 per person, and that's for equipment items, for the most part, that officers use in the line of duty. '27 will be left open as far as wages, so we have what's called a wage re opener, meaning that the contract will not be open in its entirety. We will only meet to negotiate the one issue, and that is '27 wages. So the mayor's recommendation is to approve the contract, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yeah, a quick question, I've got two ones. We have 16 lieutenants, right?
Uh, we have 15, and 14 are working at the city. There's one currently seconded to a, a task force.
Okay, so, okay, and if I was to divide those numbers by 15 roughly, that would give me the base pay, the whole package with benefits and everything roughly for lieutenant?
It should, yeah.
Right.
16.
All right, that was it. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Sephardos?
Yeah, this is just a curiosity question. It's not about the budget, but with the drug testing, they have all the different levels for, you know, for testing.
Mm-hmm.
So one, it's all random, but are these numbers the same for all of police department, or do they vary?
To be honest, we haven't re, we haven't looked at those numbers for a while. They were given to us by the drug testing lab that we were using. So those are the traditional thresholds for when you should.
For anyone?
It'll test positive, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The, the goal, I guess, I, just to add on to that, the goal is not to avoid impairment, it's to find out if you're using these substances. So officers cannot use these substances at all.
All right. Do you have a question?
Yeah, just, I mean, I, I'm all for this, but just to put it in perspective, so the 2025 is 3.04 million. What was the 2024?
Couldn't tell you. Do we know, is Mr. Groom in the room?
No, he's in the other room.
No, he's in the other room.
Um, I, it's, it's 3, 3.5% less, whatever that is.
Oh, okay, so, all right. Okay, that, that, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right. Council President Kochmar, do you have a, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move approval of the proposed labor contract with Teamsters Local Number 117, representing police lieutenants.
Second.
Spent a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We're still waiting for the group to come back. My prefer, why don't we go to council reports? It's the first meeting.
The CDBG?
Well, we're gonna pass that because Brian is in the back room.
Oh, yes.
All right. Well, actually, Keith, actually, why don't you, why don't you step up and pinch hit for, for Brian?
I'm all for council reports.
All right.
Just kidding. Keith Niven, pitch hitting for Brian Davis. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council president, council members. Okay, so this evening, we're gonna talk about a letter of support for.
Keith, before we got started, I, I thought I saw our, one of our federal lobbyists on Zoom watching this. Luke?
Luke is online, if we need Luke, and part of this tethers back to what's happening in Washington DC, so we might get there.
Could you identify Luke, Luke's last name and the firm he's with, if you recall?
[laughing]
Okay. All right. Luke, can you, hold on for just a second. Luke?
Absolutely. Hello, Mr. Mayor and council. It's great to be with you again. My name is Luke Sullivan. I'm with the firm Van Ness Feldman.
Okay, Luke, please feel free to jump in anytime. And Keith, I'm sorry I keep interrupting you. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Waiting for the city clerk to put me back up. It's okay. Okay, so this evening, we're gonna talk about the city putting together a letter of support for continual funding of community development block grants. And to step backwards, this was something that the president was not suggesting continue to be funded. And you heard at the last council meeting from the chair of the Human Services Commission talk about if our CDBG funds go away, that that's somewhere in the ballpark of $800,000 that we provide to people in need now that would go away, and, and what would we do instead of that. And so that's why we're here this evening, talking about this item. And the question in front of, the policy question in front of the city council, should the city council sign a community development block grant letter of support?
You're kicking?
[laughing] I'm bumping along.
Brian, maybe you can, maybe you can stay close.
[laughing]
Not as a relief.
I'm not garnering a lot of support here, but.
Not as a relief pitcher, he's not in the bullpen. I'm just, I'm just saying, it's just a support.
There might be two strikes at the moment.
Exactly.
So president, background on this is President Trump's budget reconciliation proposal did not include CDBG funding, as I mentioned earlier. The House and Senate proposals added CDBG back into the funding at $3.1 billion. That's nationally. As I mentioned, locally, we get about $700,000 a year. Discussions continue in both the executive and legislative branches related to the budget cuts. The draft letter of support, if signed by the mayor and council, would show support locally for CDBG funding in our community. So, as I mentioned, CDBG funding in Federal Way for '20 to '24, so we looked at almost a five-year period. It comes out to be about $3.7 million for that timeframe. This, this is a breakdown of how that money was spent. Transitional housing, $785,000. Home repair, $630,000. Planning administrative functioning, that's $619. Rental assistance, $379. Micro business assistance, $374. Multi-family housing rehab, $300. Section 8 repayment, $235. Employment services and training, $168. Disability services, $165. Housing case management, $40. Co-compliance, $35. And infant withdrawal, $10,000. I have a scant amount of knowledge of each of these, if you have questions. But I'm gonna keep rolling, and we can always come back. So options considered this evening is approved signing, or singing the letter of support as presented. I'll defer to Councilmember Walsh on that. Do not authorize signing of the letter, and the mayor recommends section 1, and Luke is on.
That's what happens when the guy who approves all the PowerPoints makes his own PowerPoint.
[laughing]
The only thing I would add is Luke Sullivan, our federal lobbyist, is online if you have any questions about.
Yeah, let's get Luke to chime in here just for a second. You don't have to sing, Luke, but, first of all, are you in DC right now?
I am, yes.
What time, what time is it there?
It is 11:30 currently.
Thank you very much. How long you, you, I think you were, been on, on this meeting the, the entire duration of the meeting, so.
I have been, and I've enjoyed every second of it.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, exactly. So, Luke, can you just give us some, you know, maybe just sort of some commentary about, you know, where we're at right now? And I wanna say thank you, you and Rick Agnew, for your help in drafting the letter. Any, any thoughts about the political terrain right now, and how things look in the Senate, the House, and about, specifically about making sure this money gets passed? What, what do you think?
Absolutely. And so right now, and, and I agree with your first option of signing this letter. Currently, there is bipartisan support for maintaining funding for this program and the appropriations process. As I'm sure a lot of you already know, we are operating in kind of uncharted territories, with the president currently requesting pretty steep cuts across the board at the federal government. And that, of course, is going to cause shock in, in communities across the country. And so this is one of the areas that you've seen both Republicans and Democrats in the Senate and the House kind of chime in and say, "We don't necessarily support the president's budget request," which came out asking to zero out this account. And so that bodes well for communities that really rely on this money, as well as programs administered through HUD and through the appropriation process. But that being said, just because there is support, and currently you've seen this budget come from both the House and the Senate that maintains a certain level of funding, the FY '26 bill in the House calls for $3.3 billion for this program, and the bill in the Senate calls for $3.1. So they're really not that far off. But what has to happen next is, in order to fund the government, which we'll be looking at having to do, or at least passing a continuing resolution in October, is have both chambers come for, come together and get on the same page. And so this is one of the areas that there isn't too much daylight in the grand scheme of things between those two numbers. However, this is uncharted territory, and it's going to require the House and the Senate sitting down with the administration and hashing out a deal. And when this happens, there's potential for areas to, even though there is support in the chambers, to be kind of traded off with the administration. And so one way to really make sure that your voice is heard, and that this is potentially protected, is having your representation in Washington, your two senators and your congressmen, hear directly from you that these are important. And when they do enter into negotiations and are able to voice their concerns in their chambers, give those to their leadership, who will then go to the White House and meet with the president and his team, that these issues are at the top of their mind. And it's one thing whenever you get together, and we always say, it always comes up, that the squeaky wheel gets the oil. And making sure that you are the squeaky wheel and that your representation hears this issue is important to you, really does make a difference. I think I can stop there, and I think that kind of hopefully gave a picture of where we are currently in Washington, and can answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Okay, Councilmember Sephardos?
So I have two questions. Number one is, the letter was addressed to our representatives. Can we expand it to all Washington state people, or no?
The entire delegation?
Yeah.
Luke?
You could. I, I think it's more targeted going directly to the people that represent you, so your two senators, as well as your congressman. Although it is good to have a wide net, you are not the only county or city or town that is reaching out to their delegation members. And so hearing from the people that you represent, and speaking on behalf of your congressman, is a lot more powerful.
Okay.
However, we could address the letter to whoever the council and mayor would like to.
All right, thank you. Is that it?
And, yeah, and my, I have another one, but I don't know if it's for Luke or any CDBG people. So the national objectives for CDBG, one of them is to remove SLAM and BLI, right? Is that the same as opportunity zone? Or what, what's the, is there intersectionality between those two?
There could be. There does not have to be. So the opportunity zone is a geographic area, and the CDBG funds go to particular programs or, that, that we identify through kind of a locally grant process that we do here within the city.
Excellent, okay, that answers. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yeah, I'm gonna see Luke. I'm glad you stayed up. I liked the letter. I read through it. I strongly agree with this. One of my questions is actually for the city, is CBDG, is it always federal? Is there a state, or do we have city ones that also we use for these kind of services?
So this is all passed through from HUD, from housing and urban development. It comes through the state, and it trickles down to us, and actually comes through King County, and we have a contract with King County on how this all works. But ultimately, it's not state or local money. It's all coming from Fed HUD.
But we do have part of our general fund that part, that funds human services.
Yes, that's a separate program, and we, we do them both separately. So there's, there's a human services grant program that we also do, and then there's CDBG, and, and they are completely two separate equations.
So there, if this doesn't, so there's no, other than the city one you were just talking about, there is no state, or if the feds don't fund it, then the state has no money to give us, so it's like dried up completely.
Yeah, so this goes from 800 to zero.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my main question. Thank you.
Councilmember Honda?
Hi, Luke, it's good to see you again. I have a couple questions. One is, what is Section 8 repayment and infant withdrawal? We know that the state's not funding the pediatric care unit down in Kent. So do we still have that program? And then I have another question.
Yeah, I would have to look into that in more detail and get back to you.
Okay. All right. And my other question is, if this, if we don't get any funding or even partial funding, because I've heard that there might be partial funding, I heard that a few months ago from, I think, NLC. How are we going to make this up as a city? Do we have the ability to do that? Do we have the ability to do that?
Well, that's actually what we gathered the group together. Where this conversation started, as I told the council at the last meeting, we were going to go through a process and initiate a triage approach, looking at all of those issues, identifying available funds to us and figuring out, you know, which, you know, which of the, which of those programs were just too important to let not be funded. And that would have to be, you know, that then, that necessitates a discussion. We were having that discussion in my office with, you know, Keith and Brian and Steve Groom and Angelina was a part of that, and talking about what that would start to look like. And that's actually when we were having that discussion, that we really centered in on the fact that there was really, there was a great potential and hope that the CDBG would be revived. And so that's, we're not there. But we would go through a, the answer, the short answer to your question is, we would have to go through a triage process that would engage the commission, the public, staff, council, and determine, A, do we have available funds, how much, and a triage approach.
And just to add to that, and I think that's a great summary, to add to that a little bit of clarity in that CDBG funds have already been approved by HUD for 2025. So 2025 program year is set. What's in Washington DC, this 3.1 or 3.3 billion, whatever it ends up being, or zero, that starts for 2026. So right now, we have funding for the next year for CDBG, once we get cleared from some of the nuances from Washington DC that we're having to change our consolidated plan to meet some of their expectations. But once we get there, we expect to have the green light for this next program year. So if anything happens budgetarily in Washington DC, it would take effect next year. So that would be basically this time next year, we'd be having to problem solve something less than $700,000 if that's where that lands.
But that's why we were starting this discussion early, and that's what then prompted this letter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good questions all. Okay, at this point, Council President Cochran, do you have a motion?
Thank you. I move approval of the Community Development Block Grant Program Letter of Support as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, to approve the CDBG proposed letter. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote yes.
All right, it passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for the singing. All right.
Good night, Luke.
Very good. Okay, now we are back to item, let's see here, item E. And Amy, are you the representative of the group here that, thank you very much for going, and can you tell us what you, what you all came up with?
Okay, so in discussing with the group, we're looking at funding $4,224 out of the Senior Advisory Commission's restricted fund for 60 $10 vouchers to run through the end of the program. That would, that number is inclusive of Virginia Mason Franciscan sponsorship, as well as Steel Lake Presbyterian Church. This is the difference from what they already have left over for the rest of the season to make sure that that happens. So it'd be 60 vouchers per week at $10 per piece for the next 11 weeks until the end of the season.
That's your recommendation?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Would you, would the council president accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes. Would you repeat that one more time, please?
Yes, it's $4,224 out of the Senior Advisory Commission's restricted fund to supplement $10 vouchers, a total of 60 per week for the next 11 weeks.
Sure, that's fine, but wouldn't you want to get some money out of the mayor?
It's always here.
I mean, it's available. You should ask him for it. Can you, can you, let me ask you, can you, on your own, just reimburse them a thousand bucks?
I, I, I have up to $19,000 that we can do. I mean, that, that we have, I have that authority to do as it's needed.
How much, huh? $2,000, Mayor. Two, two, go in for two.
Why don't we do this? Okay, we're, so Ryan.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion, so.
So I can, I can, can rescind or withdraw my former amendment, which I withdraw my former amendment.
Well, does the second allow the, what do we?
It doesn't matter, let's just start over.
What he said, I, that's what I like. All right, council president, your motion.
I move approval of the recommendation and ask mayor to discuss this issue with Amy at a later date.
Well, so, but, but you guys came up with the, the entire 4,000, what you're saying, so I think your motion would be 2,000 from that fund, 2,000 from the mayor's general fund allocation.
Yeah.
For a total of $4,000.
Good. Okay, can we just?
Hold on.
To be clear, just so that the numbers are right, it's, it would be $2,224 from the Senior Advisory Commission's restricted fund.
And 2,000.
2,000 from the mayor's fund. And also, this hasn't gone before the commission, I'm speaking on behalf of them. I'm, I can pretty much guarantee they're going to be behind it, but they don't meet until tomorrow.
Okay, I'm sure they'll be very happy with this. So, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, as stated. Anna, do you have, have you have, do you have this captured?
Some.
And I.
For a point of order, Councilmember Honda.
I have a question. This is going to start Saturday, this Saturday.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Can we have the numbers one more time? 2,000?
$2,224 out of the restricted fund for the Senior Advisory Commission, and 2,000 out of the mayor's fund.
So the pending motion is to move approval of proposed additional funding of the Federal Way Federal Way Farmer's Market Senior Food Voucher Program in the amount of $2,000 from the mayor's budget and $2,224 from the restricted funds currently set aside for the senior commission.
For a total of 4,000?
For a total of $4,224.
Okay, Anna, you got it? Okay.
And that is my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Just a question.
Yes.
11 weeks or 13? Because I heard you say 13.
Or 14.
Or, 11.
11 weeks.
You're right. Thank you.
I knew I counted that right.
So 11 weeks. Councilmember McDaniel, did you?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Honda.
I would just like to thank everyone for your support of the program. Thank you.
And I'd like to say, Councilmember Groom, sorry for the demotion.
All right. All right, Councilmember Walsh, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, very good. Okay, there's been a motion, there's been a second here, having no further discussion. Council President Cochran, I'm sorry.
We've made the motion.
You've already, sorry.
We just need to vote.
Yeah, that's right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes. Thank you very much. Great job, everybody. Glad I could help. And thank you to the senior commission, thank you for everybody involved, thank you, council. I think actually this should speak volumes to the fact that the original motion was for $500, and we came up with, well, the council and staff and everybody came up with $4,200. I think that's a real, let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you, everybody. That says everything about this council and this commission and everybody involved. So thank you. Okay, now we're onto reports. Having done the business, we'll start with Councilmember Safedawson.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the disability pride proclamation, Pride Month. As someone with a physical disability, I think it's just honoring and validating that people with disabilities are really part of the fabric of a community. And that said, STG presents sensory-friendly performance on December 13, 2:00 PM, and they do have also ASL interpretation provided. So if anybody's listening and anyone who, you know, with those disabilities, I think it would be great for them to be aware of. And again, it's December 13 at 2 o'clock, and it's The Lion King.
Very good, thank you very much. Councilmember McDaniel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll start off with National Night Out. Went to National Night Out, it was quite enjoyable, meeting people out there. The two big things I got back is there's questions on the Jack in the Box, like what the status is, so an update would be very appreciated by quite a few people out there in the community. And then.
And just so you know, I ask every, about every week I bug Keith. So at the, can I interrupt just for a second? Go for it, go for it. We're not going to do it now, but trust me, I ask every week. Sometimes I, you know, try to get Keith in a headlock, trying to figure out what's going on. Why don't we add a report at the next city council meeting? We're going to have an agenda setting this Thursday, and we will add this during emerging issues and report.
Yeah, it was amazing, different groups, they all asked the same thing. That's a big question on that one.
Jack in the Box is closing at different locations, by the way? So maybe are they?
Well, I don't want to ruin the surprise for next meeting, but they're coming, they're coming back to that location, and, well, we'll give the report. Okay. Go ahead, council member.
Yeah, and the other comments they had was still about some crime, mostly around the downtown 320th section, so there is quite a bit of questions and concerns about that one. I did enjoy the council and what school board showed up to the farmer's market. The big thing I got that one is, there was quite a bit of people in the community who loved to walk the mall, they just wish it would open an hour earlier. So that was a question they asked if we could talk to them about food. The $9 for a meal blew my mind, but that is something they actually search for, and they look for it all over the city. And housing, housing is huge, and I did not realize how big of a deal it was for the seniors right now, but that is a huge pricing out of the place kind of situation. I will hold my 10.2% sales tax complaint till next time. I am not happy with the state on that one. And my last item is, when I came on board, I did have some items I wanted to go over. I've already gone over the council president with these. I will send you a copy of it to make a meeting for my term and to-do list. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, council member. Thanks again for the heads up so we can be fully prepared for the budget discussion this evening.
We work on a team.
Yeah, exactly, thank you. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. National Night Out is always a great night, and I'm glad that we are able, as a council, to attend. In 2017, three of us got together, myself, Betty Taylor, and Claire Wilson, and we had a National Night Out event at Town Square Park. And it was for all of the neighborhoods in Federal Way that did not have an event in their own neighborhood. This year, we had 29 on our list, and then my neighborhood had an event, so there was 30 because we didn't make the list. And a good portion of those were multifamily that were on the list, which is great that they are holding a National Night Out event. But we have way more neighborhoods in this town than what was represented at National Night Out. And I would like to see the city hold an event like we did in 2017 in a park, it can be any park, for the neighborhoods that do not have a National Night Out event, so they can meet their police officers and their firefighters and their politicians and whoever else shows up. When we held our event in 2017, the city graciously donated the park to us and the electricity. The rest of it came out of our pockets, and Target helped sponsor the food. We had over 300 people show up. It was amazing. So I know there's a need, we've tried to do it again, it just hasn't worked out. I'm hoping one day that the city of Federal Way will have a National Night Out for everyone in the city who wants to attend one that doesn't have a neighborhood that attends one. We had some of our biggest neighborhoods that didn't have a single National Night Out event that we were invited to that was on the list. So anyway, that's that. Rosebud Theater is a theater company here in Federal Way that's for children, and Holly Rose started it many, many years ago, I think 12 years ago, if I'm right. They had their summer performances recently. They have one for little kids and then one for teenagers. The little kids was, is there a doctor in the house? And then the teenagers, which start at age 13 and go to 18, was Footloose. That's hard to say. And they're held at Federal Way High School Theater, which is a beautiful theater. And anyway, if you ever have a chance to attend, those are, they're really cool. The kids work so hard, and they do such a great job, and we have so many talented youth in our, in our city, we're really lucky. The Lions Club asked me to talk about the car show again tonight. It is the 20th year for the car show, and this year they're honoring Roger Flagard as he was a lion and recently passed away, and George Kohler, who was the founder of the car show. There are 58 categories this year, which is way more than any other car show has in the area. And the money goes to help with scholarships and the other things that the Lions Club does. So please come, it starts at 9 o'clock, and they're very excited about it. 58 categories is a lot of categories, so there will be a lot of prizes. So I imagine if they start at 3 o'clock, doing prizes, we're going to be there till 4 or 5. But it's awesome, and they already have a great amount of cars signed up to come. So please support the car show, and it's right next to the farmer's market, so you can do two things in one day and support two great projects in Federal Way. I recently was at the library, and I found this flyer, and we have it downstairs in our, where we have flyers. And it was interesting for me to read this, and I went to, and I actually asked the librarians about this. We have, it's called "The Welcoming Center, Ask an Ambassador." And at the Federal Way 320th Library, they have ambassadors or folks who can, with language backgrounds, to speak to people in French and Lingali and Portuguese and Spanish here in Federal Way, which I thought was really interesting. I didn't understand about the Portuguese or the French. I thought maybe we would need Ukrainian and Russian here. And they said that would be helpful, but that's down in the Auburn Library. Anyway, they say they have a great amount of people who come needing help with Portuguese. They are here as newcomers to our community, and English is not their primary language, and Portuguese is. So I didn't know that, I thought that was really interesting. And this book is awesome, and you can get it online, and we have some paper copies, but it's all of the offerings that the Parks Department has upcoming, and it's awesome. Thank you to the Parks Department for all the work that they do to put activities together for our residents. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah, first off, just in answer to the French and Portuguese question, that is mostly for African immigrants. A great number of the African immigrants speak French, and some of them, a couple of African countries speak Portuguese as well. So that is, I think, the reason why there. I don't think there's many French coming here, so. Hey, some great events the, these last few weeks. You know, it's been mentioned, the salmon bake, you know, the salmon bake is something that really brings the community together. National Night Out brought little segments of the community together. I agree that it needs to be, it needs to be publicized that people should be doing it. I visited about six or eight National, or Night Out events, and neighbors coming together and meeting neighbors. I mean, that's what it's, that's what it's all about. And just, just a wonderful, wonderful event. Fusion, I think one of the great Federal Way institutions. I, one of the great nonprofits that is helping tremendously with, with families who are facing homelessness, and it's, they're providing a hand up, not just a handout. They're, they're helping people get back on their feet and getting their own housing, generally within a, within a year. A great organization. With all the talk about the, the farmer's market and the coupons that we just passed, just a reminder, people out there that may be watching, that there are two food banks in, in the Federal Way area, the Federal Way Senior Center Food Bank, which is outside the city limits, but, but here close, and also the MSC Food Bank. And they provide great, great help for, for many, many people who are facing challenges. And since I'm mentioning some of the nonprofits, I'll mention one that does not do their work here in Federal Way, but it's based in Federal Way and shows what people here in Federal Way are doing for the rest of the world, and that is Proyecto Honduras, which helps hundreds of people in the very poorest part of Honduras, and providing healthcare for them, education for them, bringing doctors down from the states, performing hundreds and hundreds of eye surgeries, cataract surgeries, and things like that. And it's, it's based here. And it's, it's based here. Their fundraiser is coming up October, October 4th. Instead of having a dinner, they're having a bingo night and a comedian. So anyway, I'd encourage people to take a look at that and support this great, great nonprofit as well. With that, that's my report.
All right, thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Bill and Vicki, John, for the beautiful farmer's market event for the town hall with the city council and the school board. So thank you for all your work on that and all of the advertising that Amy did previous to that. And so, thank you. We actually did meet with a number of people that we would normally not have met with. Let me take you down History Lane a little bit in Federal Way. Way back when, Steel Lake Fire Station, which we just tore down, used to be the fire station for this area. And it was actually where we started with the Water District when, when, when we incorporated. Before we incorporated, the Water District and the Shore District were separate and then they combined. And the people who ran the Water District were people who were business people in the community, the Water and Shore Commissioners, one of which was Rocky Rockwell from Sacoma Lanes. And he's passed away, but his two daughters owned that building, Sacoma Bowling Lanes. And one of them has since passed away, but they've sold that building and it is now owned by new owners who are going to continue it as a bowling alley, but they're going to remodel it. So if you get a chance to stop in there, you might say hello. It's kind of an interesting thing because the Sacoma, the bowling alley and the gas station owner, Bill Martin, who owned the gas station in that area, got together and they were the commissioners for the Water and Shore District. And then we had, they all went to Federal Way High School and we had one of their kids that they went to school with, Federal Way High School became this financial officer for the Water District. So it's kind of an interesting little historical part for you. If you want to hear all about that, you go over to the Historical Society, which is right across from, it's at the Steel Lake Annex, right across from Steel Lake. But kind of an interesting thing, but if you get a chance, go to the bowling alley. That's going to be gone before you know it. And it's a really, it's an old building and they do have, actually, they're going to have meeting rooms in there. So that could be kind of interesting. We're always looking for more meeting rooms. So enough of that. Mayor, I, I know that some cities will sell their plants that they have hanging from their light fixtures. Are we considering giving those back? Do we have a way of selling that to people in the community? I know it's kind of an interesting thing people ask me about.
I don't think we've ever looked into that. We certainly can explore it. The actual baskets they hang in are four feet in diameter. They're a lot bigger than they look when you get them down onto the ground. And the cages, we reuse. So we, we take them back and, I mean, they're expensive, so we plant them in the new ones next year. But it's something, I can talk to staff about it and see how viable that would be to do.
Yeah, why don't you? It's kind of interesting because a lot of our gardeners in our community might want to make use of those. I don't know how much of a problem that would be, but.
I, I don't know. I can talk to staff about it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And then Councilwoman Honda had one, one other thing.
So I did forget something and because I want to go to the Quads Club tomorrow and not get fined, our salmon bake served about 800 people. It was a beautiful night. But we do one more fundraiser that's really important. It's a 34th Annual Golf Scramble and this year it's on September, September 12 at Auburn Golf Course. The reason it's there is that North Shore is being remodeled, so that's our home golf course. So we're going to Auburn. This is one of the club's annual fundraisers and it plays an important role in funding the different projects that we do each year. We sponsor youth and, and community programs throughout the city. So registration starts at 6:30 in the morning. We go through the event lunches at 12 and the auction starts at 1:00, according to my schedule I have in front of me. I would encourage anyone who still wants to golf, we still have spots open. I know the city generally has a team. And I was in a golf cart last year with Melissa and we survived going up and down the rocky hills and stuff. So it's really a, a good thing to, to sponsor or to attend and hopefully we will see you there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I wasn't sure they were going to let me back with all the number of houses I hit with stray balls last year.
We're in Auburn this year.
Exactly, exactly. All right. All right, everybody. Thank you. We, great job, great meeting this evening and concludes our business. We are adjourned.